Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's December 1, 2025 Board of Selectmen Meeting. And a reminder, this meeting is being broadcasted and recorded. First order of business, I'm going to ask the Chief, Tom Shamschek, to come up for an article, for an item that is regarding the Board to vote to accept the $500 fuel and service credit from Gaybrook Garage in exchange for inoperative jet ski that is no longer used or needed by the Harbor Master Department pursuant to Section 4C of the town's disposition of tangible supplies and policies. So before we vote, Tom, do you want to just tell us?
Yes, good evening. So similar to Marine One, the Parker boat that was in need of a lot of repairs, the jet ski, the last time it was used was roughly 2019. So we went through it to determine what it would need for service parts, general maintenance, and it would need more than what it's worth. So we determined that the best course of action would be to trade it to one of our current vendors as a service credit for its current value, which is roughly $500.
Any questions? I make a motion to accept the $500 credit for fuel and service, sorry, fuel and service credit from Gaybrook.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And Brendan, I will move to your town administrator report.
Thank you. The first item is the superintendent public works hiring update. Despite having many very qualified applicants express interest and some having interviewed for this position, there has been no offer made to anyone beyond the first offer that was the person withdrew since then. The Board of Public Works meets tonight, they're meeting now while you're meeting, to discuss the situation. There is one applicant that is still being considered by the Board of Public Works. And tonight we'll have more information. You met that applicant when they came in for an interview in the past to a different Board of Public Works meeting. If they decide that they want to get a larger pool of candidates before making a decision, they may move to an interim superintendent position. I don't know who they would name, but it's, again, another subject that they're discussing this evening.
And where would we, where would they get an?
It would be, I think they would be looking at somebody who already works for us, but it would be interim temporary. The person would not be eligible for the permanent job because there's no one that currently works for us that has the credentials, from what I understand. But they may need to have somebody acting because at the end of this week, the superintendent retires, they'll need somebody to sign payroll, to make decisions on behalf of the Board of Public Works, and you need somebody there to do that.
Brendan, there's been five, maybe six, that we've thought were good, and a whole host of them have withdrawn.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any consistent reason why? I mean...
So you had two subgroups. Some people said that they kind of have a young family, and even though they applied on further consideration, they didn't want to get involved with something that had the time constraints that this will have compared to what they do now. Then you had a group of people saying that they were very interested in it, but even with the higher pay rate that was set by town meeting, they would expect to have a vehicle to take home wherever it is that they live.
Oh, so there were multiple people that were after?
Two people said that.
Two people?
Yeah. There were also people who spoke to me without actually applying. They contacted me, and they learned about the position, but they didn't even apply. Qualified superintendents.
Yeah.
I know that it's difficult everywhere to find qualified applicants. A lot of engineering firms that I spoke with, because I was networking with anyone I could think of, said, yeah, we know people, but we're not going to recommend them because they work for us. You know, they're all like, you know, we'll keep an eye out, or whatever, but a number of them told me that they're having trouble just filling out their ranks, engineering firms.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a simple, easy way to sweeten the pot, to get somebody there so that we can get somebody of a higher caliber than having to drop us?
Well, from what I understand, it would potentially be a vehicle.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But this is not a contract position, and so you'd have to go through the Board of Public Works to determine if that's something that they wanted to do. There isn't, there is a current vehicle that the superintendent uses, but I don't believe there's a budget for commuting back and forth and the additional maintenance that that will require, et cetera.
It'd be worth asking them if that's something they would consider, if we could get somebody that we really wanted.
I think the hard part is that some of them, you know, were a distance away. And so it would be, it wouldn't be like they were driving to Beverly or driving to Hamilton. It was, you know, further distance.
That's why they want the car. Yeah.
And one person actually was interested in coming in for an interview. We had that set up, if you might recall.
Right.
And they got another offer with a comparable salary that included a vehicle, and that was all they wanted to hear, and off they went. So we'll know more about this after tonight, but if you know of any other candidates that are people that might be interested, it's open until filled.
Yeah.
So have them submit an application, is what I would say.
Okay.
The purchase of the tanker truck by, for the Essex Fire Department is the next item. And we do have a purchase order and an order form here from Bulldog Fire Apparatus. They happen to be a company that will provide the vehicle that we want. And as the Board already knows, we're going through the HGAC by purchasing collaborative, which we are already a member of now, so this can be purchased through that collaborative sole source. The total amount for the vehicle, which includes the outfit and mounting of different appurtenances, is $590,996. The total appropriation is $650,000, but that will be for all the equipping. And so my recommendation is, as is the fire chiefs, for the Board to approve this order with Bulldog Fire Apparatus, which happens to be a Massachusetts company.
I make a motion to accept this.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brendan, what's the timing on that? Did they say?
Oh, yeah, it says second quarter of 2026.
Oh, wow.
On the write-up.
Because at one point, we're hearing a year or two years or something.
Well, that's why they wanted to go with this. They found someone that actually had a stock truck.
Right.
And it's brand new?
There's minor modifications.
Yeah.
Yes, brand new. I think there's one more.
The bye.
Next item on the report has to do with the sampling and testing of the contaminated trench spoil stockpile. The Fall Town Meeting approved $40,000 in funding for the sampling, testing, and design of the removal of this material. And we were told shortly after Fall Town Meeting by the engineering firm, Weston and Sampson, that it would be preferable to get permission right away for sampling and testing because we're starting to get cold, into the cold nights. And the chairman authorized those tasks for that contract already, and this is a board ratification of that action.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How long will that take?
The sampling will be done, I'm sure, just in a day's time. The analysis probably takes a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
And then after that, once they know exactly what's in it, they'll pick up the next task, which is to determine what the most economical disposal method will be. And then they will end up developing a cost estimate for the annual town meeting. That will say, this is how much money the town needs to appropriate to actually get the material removed by a third party.
Thank you.
Next is a discussion concerning the timing of the Essex Elementary Project votes. We don't have any additional information on that yet. This was just to give the Board a chance to have any more discussion you want to have out ahead of my discussion with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the Manchester Town Administrator, which is happening this week.
Tomorrow, right?
Yes. And so, you know, you talked about it briefly. You also had the Finance Committee in the room, and we are shuffling off to town meeting. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to say about it. I think you're going to need the various scenarios before you can talk about it more, but we are set up for that.
Do you have any interest tomorrow?
Tomorrow, we will be hearing about different borrowing alternatives.
Okay.
So it's really going to come down to, you could start, you could do the vote at this time, or you could do the vote at that time. And then each one is going to have a range of when repayment would happen, depending on how much for short-term borrowing you use versus permanent borrowing.
Right.
So we'll get that all condensed for the Board.
And you'll send us a status and not wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, I will.
And I'm assuming that it's going to be a shared, I mean, Manchester also has to weigh in according to their strategy as well, so we would kind of be a more collaborative approach.
Right, yeah. So once all the information's out there, we'll have more discussion.
Thank you.
And do you think it, I mean, because my question is whether or not with the new budget coming in, will, you know, maybe either town or both towns will find something that says we should probably delay it? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Delay it beyond '27?
Well, whether you do it in April of '26, or you, I'm sorry, October of '26 or April of '27, I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, until, I would say, so long as everyone is confident that the options have been fully vetted, and then the design for the chosen option is advanced sufficiently to where cost information is well-known, et cetera, I don't know that there's a reason that you would delay it. You might delay it if you thought that the timing of the repayment, which was really the crux of the discussion.
Yeah.
The LEAP grant, we are told that we're definitely a finalist for that grant, but they delayed the award of the grant to the various recipients. So I suppose you could either, I mean, I would imagine you want to move forward with it if we get it, in its technical assistance. So it will be an engineering firm that is assigned by MassDOT to help Essex continue to work out an alternatives analysis for the causeway. So you could vote now to authorize the chairman to sign it if and when we get an award, or you could wait till the next meeting. It's up to you.
Might as well do it now, we're going to go for it.
I mean, you're going to do it, right?
Right.
Okay, make a motion to authorize the chairman to take action on the LEAP's grant when we get the next update.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Massachusetts Housing Partnership has a technical assistance grant program as well, and it is something that is accepting applications right now. Our town planner, Valerie Massard, is looking at that because it could be very useful in taking initial implementation steps of the housing production plan once the plan is approved, which we're anticipating is going to happen in late January. So at this point in time, I just wanted to let you know that the town planner is working on that. And if she finds that it's a good fit, will the Board authorize her to make that application?
This is to authorize the town planner to make the application?
Right, and if it needs to be signed, you would sign it, but for her to go ahead, because we're not sure when their deadline's going to be.
So entertain a motion. And now, is this for the one that's here that revised the comprehension, comprehensive emergency management plan?
No.
No.
No, we're talking about the Mass Housing.
Oh, Mass Housing.
They would help.
Are MAPC, right?
No, the Mass Housing Partnership is MHP.
Right, you're right. Oh, okay, oh, right.
Yeah, yeah, they're separate.
Yeah, 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 okay, got you.
Okay, sorry, let me redo that. Entertain a motion to authorize the town planner and the, to go after this grant, and for the Board of Selectmen Chair to sign this Massachusetts Housing Partnership Technical Assistance Grant.
So moved.
Second?
So has anybody had any discussion, the planner, with MHP to?
She's starting now, and she did have some initial reach out to them, and they said that they seemed like it might be a good fit.
Okay, good, all right.
And what, where would this grant money be? You think it's just for the housing plan that we would be using with?
Yeah, so it would be, once the housing plan is approved, MHP then would bring in their people to look at all the things that were recommended, help the housing trust zero in on, say, the first one or two things, and hopefully get those off the ground.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's like, yeah, carrying the momentum.
It's a huge document for somebody to go through.
Right.
It's great.
All those in?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the revised comprehensive emergency management plan, otherwise known as the SEP, that has, the plan has been revised. The fire chief and the police chief have recommended its adoption, and the Board has had a chance to review that. So I'm recommending that the Board approve the next iteration of the comprehensive emergency management plan.
So before I take a motion on that, Chief, is there anything you wanted to say or add? No? Okay.
Can we talk, can we ask some questions? You want to do the vote, the motion first?
I think we could probably talk, and then we'll take a motion.
Great. So I have a few questions. You are the EOC manager, correct?
I'm the Emergency Management Director.
EMD, yeah. EOC is Emergency Operations Center, EMD is the Emergency Management Director.
Okay, so, and I'm asking these questions because I just don't know.
Yeah.
Or I want you to say it out loud. How do you regularly communicate, like, if the situation is kind of not there yet, but it may be, it has a possibility of kind of maybe going awry? So do you regularly always use the same form of communication so that you can kind of get the practice in? Or is it sometimes like, oh, the school's closing because there's a tree across Southern Avenue or something, you know? How do you usually communicate? And is it a regular practice so that people know, oh, when this, when this, the red, whatever that red phone was on?
Batman.
Batman? Like, if that phone is ringing, I know it, it's something I need to answer.
Right, yeah. No red phone, but good analogy. So we are, I think we're consistent in we would send out a code red or reverse 911 messaging.
Which, when we had the water break, that's what we did, and it was a banner up on the website, and then we did an email push, and then Facebook.
And I'm talking about two steps before that, which is?
With the other community.
Yes. Well, the folks that you identified at the very beginning, which were like that core group. So your core team always knows if this comes, it's going to come through on this, and this is how we communicate the first.
So to my, like, to the fellow firefighters?
Or Brendan and Alva and?
Yeah, so we do have a text group established that any, like, public safety emergency or just kind of an FYI-type situation gets popped out to them. And then anything that would go out to internally would be through software that we have, notification software. So if the rec is putting something out for an emergency, that's going to go out through that portal, as well as, we can just send out standard messaging as well. So FYI, water main break at 125 Main Street, sorry, 125, not jinxing you, just in general, you know, we can send that out. So that would be a standard, certainly, communication.
Okay. How many, how much training is happening? So say you're at work in Gloucester, or Tom is out of town, or, so how many folks down the line are trained to address if the same kind of level of competency and understanding of what the, sorry, of what it should be? Do you know what I'm saying? Like?
Yeah, I think by and large, any officer has rights to send out messaging. They're versed in it, they know, you know, kind of the, the natural steps that would have to be taken. As far as escalation to the Board or to BZ, it would be, it would still kind of get flipped to me potentially. Or between Tom and myself, the good news is, if it's anything major, both Tom or I would be involved. So if one of us is absent, the other's just still going to put it out to that same group, so similar, you know, two people. A little redundancy there, probably not as much as we could have.
So when I was reading this, I was thinking about tragedies that have happened in other communities where public safety didn't necessarily have the same, they weren't reading from the same playbook.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming that this is your playbook, or the kind of overview of a playbook.
Yep, yeah, larger scale events is that, right? So we have, you're going to have a couple, a couple of different roles. Police are going to have their function, fires can have their function, and then emergency management in this, you know, in this town, myself, would kind of be trying to do dual roles, which is potentially challenging, but we will make it work.
Yeah. And then just final thing, spell check. There's some things that I caught that were like, oof. Also, there are some commas. I love a comma, but there were commas there that were unnecessary, so I think if you just ran through it, it would show you. And then there's some font changes, too. I mean, these are just dumb little things, but, and then, are we going to put this in PDF form? Because I could, I found myself editing the electronic version and?
Yeah, I mean, it will be put.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be a live, like a Word doc.
No, we don't ever put a live document on the website.
Thanks. Yep, it was great.
But we'll look at all those things.
Thank you. Thank you.
You got it? Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I take a motion to adopt the revised comprehensive emergency management plan?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a lot of work. Thank you.
Yeah, the public safety guys did the heavy lifting now. And they already approved the order of the tanker, Christian. It's all done already.
Mr. Decker? Sorry.
Bye. It was good that you were here to talk about this anyway, so.
We do have public comment. Is there anything you'd like to say? Okay.
Rudy Dang.
Thanks. Online, is there anybody that would like to say public comment? No raised hands, no questions. Moving on to other business. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $204,029.3.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's November 17, 2025, open meeting and executive session.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Going down to consider a letter of support for the KPN Regional Emergency Planning Committee's application to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council Technical Assistance Program. So all signed? We don't, oh, no, I do have to sign.
This was the letter that you sent to us, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, with the backup information.
It's to the MAPC, to Elizabeth White?
Yes.
Both of them are.
Others, too?
No, the other one isn't.
It's to MVP.
Yeah.
Coming down the line.
Do we vote on this?
Do you want, you want to call a vote on that?
Thought I did. I entertain a motion to support the KPN Regional Emergency Planning Committee's application to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for the Technical Assistance Program.
Yeah. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one, I entertain a motion to support the letter for the Regional Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness 2.0 Grant Application that will be submitted to the Metropolitan Area Council on behalf of the four KPN communities.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sure. Do it, well, does everyone have a copy?
Everyone has seen it, yeah.
In an email. So as far as items that could not be reasonably anticipated, Annie, I understand you would like to say something?
Sure. I just wanted to propose some language around an expression of sadness towards, about the death of Representative Ann Margaret Ferrante. So wrote something up. Do we want to read it, and then you would send it out on behalf of the Board of Selectmen? Or how do you want to do this?
Yes, it could definitely be sent out to her staff and to her family.
Okay, do you want to read it?
And be reflected in the minutes as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. And then again, open to edits. "It is with profound sadness that the Essex Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the residents of Essex, join with our KPN neighbors to mourn the death of Representative Ann Margaret Ferrante. Representative Ferrante was a champion for KPN, focusing her work on climate resiliency, maritime commercial development, affordable housing and food security, healthcare protections, energy affordability and clean power, and economic development. Her career was marked by fierce advocacy, effective legislation, and sincere kindness. We send our heartfelt sympathy to her family."
That's lovely. I do want to say that she and I started in the same year. I started on the school committee the year she got voted in. And so I've always felt like she was, I just really appreciated her and her viewpoints and her inputs.
She was a real advocate for the region and Essex, for sure.
Yeah.
So does the Board want to vote on that as an official statement?
To entertain a motion to approve this being documented and sent out to the family and to the office staff?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to, I'm sorry to continue this, but I know that there's a service on Thursday.
Yes.
How do you usually handle stuff like that? Does one person go on behalf, or do the people just go?
I'll be there. I know that fire and police are also going to be there, participating in a walk-through, I believe they're calling it. But certainly anyone is welcome to attend on Thursday at St. Anne's in Gloucester.
Yeah, I saw that it's like at nine?
9:30.
For the wake, and then?
The wake.
One o'clock is for the mass?
Yeah.
Yes, that's my understanding.
The Chief sent out an email with the details?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to appointments. So I entertain a motion to accept the following people to the Open Space Committee. These people, Julie Schofield had reached out to them and got them to agree to a partial term, which is ending in June 30, 2026, which is, and I hope I don't butcher Stacy's last name, nope, can't say it.
Capitasto.
Capitasto, and Janet Carlson.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. They're already really working hard on that survey.
So then we're going to do, for the licensing, I'm actually going to read them quickly because it's, there's a lot here. So a motion to approve the all alcohol beverage restaurant license renewal for the Great Marsh Restaurant, LCC, sorry, LLC, at 99 Main Street.
You can say as shown on the agenda. You don't have to read them all. It's up to you.
Because I had a question.
Okay, got it. Okay, got it.
So moved.
Second.
A little bit of a discussion. I just wanted to ask, so they're not open, or we haven't received anything that stated they weren't going to be open, correct?
We haven't received anything that is saying that they're not open, correct? But even if they're not open as of, say, today, and we found that out officially, the ABCC is going to grant them six months to arrange to transfer the license. If you want, I can contact the owner and ask what their status is and what their plans are.
I saw them open yesterday.
So?
Yeah, there were people in there anyway, and dozen cars in the lot, which surprised me, but.
I guess it's just, published or put in with the ABCC is the hours that they're going, they should, they're open. So they're not open consistently, and I didn't know if that's a problem as a town? Is it a problem to us? Or do we just say, yeah, understand?
Well, that's a good question, because didn't someone have to notify us when they weren't going to be open because they were having?
Yes, that's the norm. They're supposed, if they're, if they're going to stray from the approved hours, they're supposed to be either making an amendment if it's a permanent thing, or asking for temporary ability to close, or to cut down on the hours for cleaning, maintenance, repairs, anything like that.
Yeah.
And we have received no notification of that kind.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be good to just know what the status is.
Because it, I, it doesn't seem as though it's open every day.
I'll get the board an update for the next meeting.
But we also have heard, through that lovely rumor mill, that, you know, it's on the market, it's trying to sell, so I don't want to cause any problems, I just was questioning. Okay, so next is the, I make, entertain a motion to accept the Class II license renewals. Just so everybody's aware, Class II license renewals is used car dealer?
We didn't vote on the?
Oh, sorry, you're right.
What are we voting on?
Do you want to do the whole slate?
You could do, unless there were questions on other ones, you can just say the licenses as listed on the agenda, the remainder of them.
Okay.
You comfortable with that?
The only question I want, I do want to ask is in regard to these car dealer, these car salespeople. One has a license for six cars, and the other has a license for eight. Do we have some type of enforcement? Do we check on them? Do we, how would we go about asking that question?
It would be complaint-driven, or you could ask the police to go check.
And I just, you know?
Not build-in inspector?
No, I don't think so, no. Motor vehicles.
Right.
All right, so I entertain a motion for the licensing. We've got, as stated on the form, common vititular license renewal, the marijuana retailers and cultivating license renewal, the wine and malt beverage package store license renewal, and the annual weekday entertainment license renewal.
So moved.
And, one more, and the one-day, no, yeah, one-day, no, let's go take that separately.
Okay, so move for the first?
Second.
Whatever.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So just to let you know, I'm going to entertain a motion for ratifying a chairman's signature for a one-day wine and malt license, that Gina Mathis of Sin-Sin &amp; Company at the Estuary at 74 Main Street on Sunday, November 30, from 11 to 1. She had been, I was in the office when she came in and talked to BZ. We pretty much told her, we'll do it this time, it's the beginning of the season, we know they knew, moved into town, and so I make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Personnel Board. So the Board of Public Works accepted the clerk position, clerical support, associate position description?
No, so the, what we were?
This is the one from the last?
Right, you asked me to check with the Board of Public Works on a couple of things. First of all, were they planning on perhaps not even rehiring for the part-time clerical position that has been vacated because that person now has a full-time job in the treasurer's office? And they did not elect to cut back, and in fact, they have already rehired for that position, which is their prerogative. With respect to position descriptions, I received no feedback on whether they intend to make changes to either one of them.
Okay.
And I did ask.
It's just a bit frustrating. It's been 94. I mean, why wouldn't you want the personnel board to take a look at it or to work with them to help make sure it's up to speed?
I'll ask them again. Maybe they were going to, they didn't say anything to me, the chairman didn't, but they do, they are meeting tonight, so I guess there's a chance they're going to discuss it tonight.
And my other comment is, is that it's just sad to me that they went and hired somebody, you're going to have a new superintendent, it would have been nice for them to be able to be the person who interviewed and, and put a person in position, even if it is a part-time position. No other comments?
No.
Okay, so we're going to go to reminders. Essex Elementary School Building Project Community Meeting, December 9, 2025, at 6:00 PM. This is going to be at the Manchester Memorial Elementary School at 43 Lincoln Street in Manchester. And the next regular Board of Selectmen meeting will be on Monday, December 15, 2025, at 6:00 PM, here on the third floor of the auditorium. And the Selectmen meet jointly with the Planning Board on January 21, 2026, to review and approve the Essex, you spelled it wrong, Housing Production Plan.
On the newer version of the agenda, there is also the Regional School District Tentative Budget Hearing, which is on the 10th of December.
Thank you.
Sure. I know you're always?
And the board will be posted for the, yes.
The Essex Housing Plan has been posted, right? And that's, there's a public, is that right?
Yes, so you can go to their webpage, and you can also link to, and it's in my report, the links. You can link to the dedicated project webpage as well, and so that is out for public comment. And all comments are going directly back to John Cruz, who's helping us coordinate that.
Right, and can you tell me how long that public comment period is? Sorry.
They intend to keep it open, I think, for three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, my meeting notes on that said you asked the question, but I didn't put down how long.
Yeah.
It's usually, it's, they start at six.
And can they give us, on the 15th, do you think you could ask them if they've gotten any responses, or how many responses?
Sure, I can get you an update.
Just so we have an idea. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't even finish my ginger ale.